May everyone welcome to the March tenth, two thousand twenty-five study session of Livonia City Council. Could I have everybody rise for the pledge of allegiance led by the honorable Vice President, Martha Tash?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I think we need to have like intro songs. All right, everybody, this meeting sets the agenda for the two thousand thirteenth regular meeting, which is a voting meeting that will take place on, guess what, Monday, March thirty-first. We're getting closer to springtime, let's do this, where tonight's items will be officially voted on. I'm showing all members of council here. I'm going to jump right into audience communication for items that are not currently on the agenda. Name and address, you got three minutes.
Steve King, three, three, nine, five, zero Coventry. We're at a disadvantage when we come up here at audience communication, we put stuff out there, and then council people, they can say stuff and they can speak over and over again, say whatever they want. So I want to read the definition of innovative, tending to innovate or introduce something new or different, characterized by innovation. So I'm pushing back against you, Rob, because the way we build Silver Village, Newburgh Village, it's right out of the nineteen seventies, stick-built on slabs, vinyl windows. I read about a new hot water heater today, Kala is the company. It's a heat pump hot water heater. It saves you over the life of that water heater, four thousand dollars. There are millions of options. The trades, I go to builder shows, the things, it's amazing, all the new and innovative, truly innovative things that you won't find if you went into Newburgh Village or Silver Village. Again, this is our last opportunity. Put a steering committee together, put people who are knowledgeable, put builders on that steering committee, put seniors on that, and regular citizens on that steering committee, and let's really, really do something innovative. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. King. Good evening, Mr. Martin.
Well, hello once again. Okay. Just want to talk briefly about, let me hold up one of my latest displays here. This is about, a little bit about free speech here. And the question is, do I have to give my address for free speech? And, no, in most situations, you don't have to provide your address for your right of free speech. So I happened to be at a zoning board of appeals meeting recently, and the gentleman who was running the show there, Mr. Gregory Copeland, when I watched how the petitioner was being treated when there was a chance for audience communication at that particular thing, I got up and I said who I was and from the great state of Michigan, and he proceeded to start hollering at me that I had to give my address, and I said, no, you don't. And he kept on with that, that yes, you did. And so it is what it is, but the questions that he asked the petitioner was like, had nothing to do with what the guy was there for, okay? Where do you work? The guy says, I'm retired. Well, where did you work? What did you do there? Has nothing to do with why the guy's there, absolutely zero. And I remember years ago, when Brian Meakin first put him on there, Gregory Copeland, is that I thought it was a mistake at the time, and then he was constantly reappointed, and Rob put him on there recently also, several years ago. Guy's one of the worst, okay? Don't care for him a bit. Now, I'm using free speech, but I'm describing what took place, okay? Now, when I leave here, Rob, you can defend him and say he's the greatest person on the earth, and that's, that's fine. You got that right, because it's free speech. You have an opportunity to be incorrect, and I'm going to give you that time. But I found the questions that they were asking at those meetings to really be bad, okay? Had absolutely nothing to do with why the guy was there, seeking a variance, okay? Zero. So thanks for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Martin. Any further audience communication? Seeing none, I'm going to go to council. City Council, do we have any communication?
Yeah, number one.
All right, seeing none, and I would like to note that that's the first time that council did not want to talk, which is, it's monumental, so we're going to jump right into council announcements. I want to say that we do have new data on item number three, and I'm going to jump right into, item number one is a request to waive the city's noise ordinance. This comes to us from Jake Turland to host an album release party at three, four, two, eight, six Trillium Court on Saturday, May twenty-fourth, two thousand twenty-five, from seven PM to ten PM.
Yes, sir.
You got to tell us more about this, this is exciting.
Um, well, my, my band, we wanted to do something that we haven't really seen anybody else do. And us all young men who are just graduated, we have a lot of friends and family who are, you know, under the age of sixteen, even ten, and we want them to kind of experience what we can do and what we're about. So we had this idea to, you know, host a show out of our garage and, funny enough, call it the Noise Complaint. So, yeah, it's really mostly what it is, and we're really, really passionate about this, and I just wanted to, I did my due diligence, I went around the neighborhood, asked people if they wanted to come to the show, and a lot of people in the neighborhood actually want to come to the show. My neighbor next to me said that if it, if the music was bad, he was going to call the cops. So we had a rehearsal yesterday, he listened in, and he said that you won't see any red and blues, so.
It's so awesome. Before, I'm going to hand it over to Councilman Donavich. Honestly, we get a lot of, you know, requests, but this is exciting. So your band is called Noise Complaint?
No, our, the show, the show is called the Noise Complaint.
What's your band's name?
Black River.
What is it?
Black River.
River.
We play a lot of blues, rock, metal, stuff like that.
I'm going to find you online and see, and we'll try to share this out, this is great.
Come to the show, you know the address.
I'm just worried if it does get a little out of hand, then I got to run and hop fences.
Yeah.
Councilman Donavich.
Well, Mr. President, I'm not sure.
I thought, I was just thinking, man, I'm sorry.
I think our chief of police is watching right now, so, and I'm not sure you can jump fences anymore.
Not anymore.
Sir, Jake, all due respect, you fit the mold of what I envisioned a rock star would look like.
A lot of people have said that.
So I'll just say that if, I'm not going to offer an approving resolution unless you can promise me, if you make it big, you come back to the city council, because we'll probably all still be here ten years from now.
I'll be here.
When you're on like MTV or something like that, and you make it big.
I'm not going to be here.
She'll probably still be here.
Oh, she will. She will.
You might end up singing a song about her one day.
That'd be great.
But I think it's pretty cool what you guys are doing, and I know our ordinance department, Mr. Jerome Hannah, he loves noise complaints, so I'm looking forward to, to hearing about some, some noise ordinance issues, but I think you did your due diligence, you talked to your residents, this is, this is interesting to hear, the civic engagement, get involved in your community, and hats off to you, Jake, and your band. Good luck to you guys, and I hope they see you on TV one day. Mr. President, I'd like to offer an approving on consent, there's objections from my colleagues.
Improving on consent, council, anything further?
Sounds great.
Anything from the audience? All right, so Jake, you have an approving on consent, which means you could come back to us if you want, but your matter is all but assured to be approved, and I'm marking the date, I might pop by.
Free show.
I'm excited about this, and then let us know what we can do. I'm going to go jump on and follow your band and keep it up, man, that's awesome.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Thank you. All right, moving on to item number two is a reappointment of James McCann to the Livonia Board of Ethics from the office of the mayor. This is for a three-year term which will expire on March first, two thousand twenty-eight. Counsel, and we, we do have Mr. McCann here. Oh, Eric, I'm sorry.
Mr. McCann has been an excellent leader and mentor on this committee for the number of years that I have been the associated attorney, and I am pleased and honored to request this council to approve his reappointment for another term.
Awesome, I think we are all honored to have Mr. McCann joining any civic boards or city boards. Councilman Toye.
Mr. Chair, well, Jim has been here since God was a small child, and he, he has always done a fabulous job, even when he served on this, on council. I mean, you know, the rest of us just kind of sat there where we took good advice from Jim McCann. I mean, he knew, and, you know, his lawyer skills as well are sharp and keen, and he's a very fair person above all else, and he's very good at running campaigns, too, so, um, no, above all else, he comes from a great family who's done many great things in our community over the years, and I'm honored to put his name on a consent agenda for us to approve him. Thank you.
All right, Councilman Donavich.
Yeah, thanks, Mr. President. Mr. McCann has been a part of our community for a very long time. I was talking to him, had an opportunity to talk to him between the meetings, and I think he got on the board somewhere back in the eighties, and then was on the council planning commission in the nineties, and then on city council in the early two thousands until about two thousand thirteen, and, and he's continued his service on the Board of Ethics for a long time. He's a brilliant legal mind, he's got an amazing family here in the community, his family has served in some capacity in the city really since the conception of our community, and it's nice to see Mr. McCann continue in this road on the Board of Ethics. And then Councilman Toye is right, they both did come over on the Mayflower a long time ago, so it's nice to see them here. Thanks, Mr. President.
Welcome to America, you both.
Thank you so much.
All right, with that, any other comments? Well, Mr. McCann, you can come hang out with us on the next meeting, but you do not have to. Your matter is all but assured to be approved, and thank you for your service to the city. We're so proud to have you.
Having come up to the mic for old times' sake.
You know what, I'm, I'm going to, yeah, all right.
Come on, come on.
All right.
Come on down.
Tell us a little bit about yourself.
Now, I think this is most of the people in the city have heard enough from me. Thank you for the very kind words. All your comments about my age were very insightful. Councilman Pastor has a better term for it, he says I'm so old I fart dirt, so. No, I, all seriousness, I think that you guys, ladies and gentlemen, it's tremendous responsibility of what you do, it's a lot of hard work. I get disappointed when I hear comments about the ZBA or the planning commission that become personal, say negative things about people, because my experience, every person up here, including the city employees, really have their heart in what they're doing. The department heads, the city employees, DPW, the fire department, everybody in the community truly has a great spirit, and my years with the city have shown that the city of Livonia, you know, ninety percent of the population really appreciate the work you do, and I, as one, do as well. And I told the mayor, I really appreciate being back on the Board of Ethics, it's the perfect retirement job, so, thank you.
Thank you, we appreciate you. All right, council, anything else? Audience? Seeing none, we're going to move on to item number three, is a request for council approval on the proposed lot split. This comes to us from the Department of Assessment. In reference to the property located north of Seven Mile and east of Farmington Road in the southwest, section three, the addresses are as follows, one nine, three oh three, one nine, three oh seven, one nine, three one one, one nine, three one five, one nine, three one nine, Shadyside. This is all to waive the lot with requirement for proposed parcels A, B, and C, and we do have new data, as was said during council update. Counsel.
Mr. President.
Floor is yours.
Thank you, and it looks like we have a petitioner here as well. I certainly don't want to downplay our rules and lot standards, but this is just over a foot of deficiency on each of these properties. The current dilapidated buildings, or blight, I guess, need to be removed, and I'm really impressed with the renderings that the petitioner submitted, that they're looking to build on these properties, and I'll let the petitioner introduce himself, and he can explain a little bit more about the project.
Yeah, so, good evening, council, Mark Rotundo from Shadyside Development LLC, one nine, three zero seven Shadyside Street in Livonia. So this property, it currently entails a condemned home and a, another structure, a garage that is, that has recently collapsed before we purchased the home. There's also debris on the property, including construction materials and just various miscellaneous debris. So our plan entails cleaning up the property, demoing the home and the garage, and then hauling off the debris from the site, and then building three new homes. So we're here for a lot with waiver, because we are a foot deficient of the seventy-foot minimum.
Can you repeat that? One foot?
One foot, yes.
Mr. Chair.
I got Vice President, then I'll go to Councilman Toye.
So I guess that was where I was, I was, like I said, I don't want to take it lightly, but at the same time, we're talking about one foot, so I'd like to offer an approving on consent for this particular lot split, even though I wouldn't typically do that. And I'm really enthused with what you're planning on doing with this property. Thank you.
Counselman Donavich, and then Councilman, oh, Councilman Toye, do you still want to speak?
Yeah, please, if you can.
Yeah, floor is yours.
Oh, thank you. To Mr. Rotundo, if I may. Mr. Rotundo, what type of homes were you planning on putting there?
Yeah, so these will obviously be single-family residential homes, probably three or four-bedroom, depending on the variation of plan that we use. I did send the council some renderings of recent homes that we've built in the city and neighboring municipalities, and this will be similar, and they're going to be nice homes. We're, we're really trying to target new, young families, to bring in families to the city, and, and to, to conform with the existing homes that are surrounding it.
And the reason I ask you that is, I know you sent us renderings, but the viewing public doesn't see those, you know what I mean? So that way we bring it out and they kind of hear it and maybe realize that we're, you know, cognizant of that kind of thing. So I'm trying to remember, were they mostly brick, or did you have some siding kinds of materials on those as well, right?
Yeah, there's, there's both, yeah.
Yeah, that's great, that's great. Well, that'll be a welcome addition, thank you very much. Thank you for thinking of those young families, we need that population.
Absolutely.
Yes, sir, thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Donavich.
Thanks, Mr. President, good evening, sir, thanks for being here tonight. The pictures you sent us were eye-opening. When you look at that, that blighted, dilapidated structure, the garage is all caved in, there's trash and debris all over the site, it's a very, looks like a haunted house, you know, truth be told, and it's a nice neighborhood, and I imagine the residents in that neighborhood are going to be pretty excited when they finally see that, that blighted property removed and three beautiful homes built. I know there was some conversation with Council Vice President Tash about that deficient one foot. You look at the surrounding homes, and you can see on the TV above there, right there, those lots are seventy feet, you're going to be sixty-nine feet, so you're not going to notice a difference from the naked eye, and the renderings that you provided, those new homes are going to look really nice, and just a great addition to that community. I, I know for one person, I'd be pretty excited if I was a resident living over there, and going from what's currently there to these three beautiful new homes, it's going to increase their values, and that'll be a good thing. I know Councilman Toye asked you some questions about what those homes might look like, so they're typical three, three-bedroom, four-bedroom ranches, maybe Colonials?
Correct.
Okay, and those will have basements?
Yes, they will.
Two-car garages, or?
Two or three.
Okay, great, great, now I'm looking forward to, when do you guys hope to start demolition work?
So we'd like to get started on the demo pretty quickly, we're just waiting on the utility companies to disconnect the utilities so that we can get the permits from the building department to start demoing.
Also waiting for city council to approve, right?
The city council approval as well.
I think you'll be okay, sir, thank you very much for your family's work here, this is pretty exciting stuff, thank you. Thanks, Mr. President.
We have an approving on consent. Mark, I want to, I, I just want to give Mark some kudos. Mark, I think he's probably called each one of us, submitted the paperwork, the packet is, is perfect, your willingness for one foot, you know, it's, it's honorable and it shows the character to your work, and I know that this is kind of an early step in, in your career on this, and we wish you the best. This, the way you've set it up, I just wanted to let you know on how professional that packet was, and I, we could definitely tell on how much time you spent on it, and it helps us out, it gives us the things, and, you know, the neighbors, that's going to be a huge addition to that neighborhood, it's going to raise property values, so, so keep on keeping on, keep rocking, and, and anything we could do to help you, we're right here.
Appreciate that.
Thank you. So you have an approving on consent, which means you can hang out with us, but you don't have to, and then once the Frost laws rip up, then get to work.
Absolutely, thank you, guys.
Anything from the audience on this? Seeing none, good to go, thank you.
Thank you.
All right, moving on to item number four is a request to approve the Livonia Firefighters Union collective bargaining agreement. This comes to us from the Civil Service Department for the period of December first, two thousand twenty-four, to, through November thirtieth, two thousand twenty-seven. Mayor, good evening.
Good evening, council, and thank you for your time tonight. You know, the average council packet has about five hundred pages in it, and I think that's something that residents and perhaps even some of the people in the audience don't recognize. This, tonight's packet was a little bit heavier, because it contained an entire contract for the Livonia Firefighters Union. Council members have the added benefit of not only being able to review that packet, and I trust that you all do, because my office, other department heads, other offices, get questions about things in those packets. That's why these meetings are so important, and I know you understand the importance of them. They're study meetings, they're a chance for you to better understand things and learn things, but prior to these meetings, perhaps what the audience doesn't recognize at times, is that a lot of time goes into understanding issues in depth, because you've accessed department heads, you've asked for additional information, you've contacted petitioners, and you've gained the information that you need in order to render a decision by the time you get to a regular meeting. So before you tonight is one of those all-consuming issues, and it's one of the bigger issues that you get a chance to decide on. This is the second contract that my, my administration has negotiated with the Livonia Firefighters Union. It's a good contract, and it was perhaps only surpassed by the contract that turned, returned defined benefit to both our police officers and our firefighters. The importance of spending a little bit of time tonight discussing this contract with you this evening is so that we all understand the value that the city of Livonia places on its first responders, the value that not just this council, but our residents and my office place on public safety professionals. Prior to two thousand twenty, the city of Livonia was facing a critical situation. As you may all recall, we were short firefighters, we were short police officers. Now, many cities throughout the country were experiencing that same type of shortage, but unlike those communities, Livonia decided that it was going to do something about it. So we invested in the long-term future of our public safety professionals, and we reintroduced a defined benefit program in the city of Livonia. Livonia essentially said to our police officers and firefighters, if you're willing to put your lives on the line for us, we're willing to invest in your lives. As a result, this was an expensive item in our budget, but it has been vital to getting us back to full staffing in both of those departments. But the market continues to change, and things continue to get competitive, and wages is one of those areas where that competition has really stepped up. So this contract goes one step further than acknowledging a defined benefit program, it takes on the issue of wages, and as a result, our firefighters will see wage increases of approximately twenty percent over the next three years. This contract will allow us to bring exceptional healthcare benefits to our employees at affordable prices by no longer tying us to Blue Cross Blue Shield as our sole provider. We're going to be able to negotiate better rates while at the same time maintaining this high level of coverage that we provide to our first responders. And finally, while there are a lot of benefits in this contract, and Janine will address some of those in just a minute, I think the one that might be most important to Livonia residents is our ability to make sure that we can train quality firefighters in the future and attract those kinds of firefighters. So the compensation package that's included in this contract is not only competitive with, but at times it is better than those that are offered by other surrounding communities. So I want to thank our negotiating team, I want to thank Janine Leibel, Debbie Lichtenberg, and Greg Schultz. I also am grateful for Chief Jensen and his leadership, and I want to congratulate the Livonia Firefighters Union. They did a really fantastic job in securing eighty percent approval for the tentative agreement that's before you tonight. That is an exceptionally high rate of approval that they accomplished at their February sixth meeting. What I'm hoping, of course, is that council does them one better, and that at your next meeting, you are one hundred percent in agreement with this contract. I'm going to leave Janine here to answer any questions that you might have, and maybe even Janine provide him a little bit more information, but I want to thank you for your diligence in reviewing these documents ahead of time, because I am certain that you have all done that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, I'm Janine Leibel on behalf of Civil Service, and I'd also like to just take a moment to thank the mayor for being such a critical part of our, not exactly the negotiating team, but in guiding us and making sure that we were always staying on track to respond to the things that the firefighters told us that they needed. We listened, we worked hard to narrow down the issues and to carefully craft a contract that addresses the issues that they say that we're facing, which is mostly recruitment. We offered a generous, yet fiscally responsible package, and in the first year, they'll have a, excuse me, this year they'll have a three-point-five increase, and next year it'll be a four-point-five increase. Before that happens, they'll also have a wage adjustment in order to, it keeps that comparable with what we saw for our police department, and also we eliminated the wage tiers, so that way someone who is a little bit newer to the department but doing the same work as someone who's been there a few years before, they're on the same level. We also included into their base wages the uniform cleaning allowance, or uniform maintenance and cleaning allowance. That allows us to publicize or publish higher starting rates, and it also goes towards their final average compensation, which is a good thing for their benefit, their pension plan. Our EMT program is excellent for recruiting. When we are currently posting for our jobs, we get a ton of fire, a ton of applicants who don't have their paramedics license, but yet they do have their EMT license, which is a step below. It would be great to get those candidates through the door and have them skill up and, you know, go through the very rigorous paramedic training program, while they're getting the experience on hand with our highly skilled firefighters that we currently have. We have a promotion bonus, and that is because when someone is looking to get a promotion, they work really hard. We got rid of the straight block system, which was just based on seniority, and now when they're going into an assessment center, they're preparing themselves, they're giving us their bullet points and their elevator pitch as to why they're a great candidate for the next spot. They put a lot of preparation into that, and we thought that it was something that we should incentivize, because we'd like to see people work hard to keep moving through our department, it creates a strong department from top to bottom. And we added a holiday in keeping with the rest of our bargaining units, and that is Martin Luther King Junior Day. We, as the mayor said, we took out the brand name of Blue Cross Blue Shield, but we're keeping all the plan designs. We think it's something that our employees value, it's something that they come to me and they repeat every year, so I, I know the value to them, and not looking to gut any of our plans. Then we did a couple of administrative cleanup items. One is that we sort of standardized some of the dates where it called out, say, you know, December fourth, we instead tied that to the first payday in December, which just keeps it easier and doesn't require our payroll department to run funny, off-kilter payrolls. We also changed the workers' comp, workers' compensation supplement, it's now reduced to one year, and that is in keeping with the police and ASME groups as well. Another thing that I don't think most people know a lot about is the MERP. Forgive me for not giving you the exact letters that MERP stands for, but in general, it is a plan that the International Firefighter Association has developed, and instead of going to the retirement health savings plan, they can buy credits towards that, which they were keen on getting that, and it's, you know, fairly cost neutral to the city, but a really great benefit to have and something that, as a firefighter, they're, they're proud to support, and we're, we're proud to offer that. And we also tried to make it easier for them to use their personal business time and get a payout of their compensatory time, so that way it's not something that just builds up unused, they can put it to good use throughout the year.
Awesome, no, that's, that's a lot, no, good job. I'm going to open it to council. Councilman, oh, actually, I'm sorry, Vice President, Councilman Morgan, Councilwoman Toye.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Chair. I just wanted to express my support for the agreement reached with the firefighters union. Obviously, this contract recognizes their hard work and the dedication to our city, and I appreciate that, and the fact that they're receiving fair compensation and benefits for the work they do, while OSCO maintaining fiscal responsibility, so I appreciate that a lot. I'm pretty public usually about how essential it is to invest in our first responders, as we all know, they put their lives on the line every day for us, and they do a great job with it. I am especially proud, when I was reading the lengthy packet that the mayor spoke of, that we are continuing to prioritize, that all of our firefighters will be able to be on a path to becoming paramedics. I think that to be of the utmost importance in our city, especially with some of our senior population and so forth, and I know that was really important to the firefighters as well, so kudos for getting that piece of it done. That's the part- kudos for getting that piece of it done. That's the part I was actually kind of concerned about. So, I just wanted to say publicly, I appreciate the collaborative efforts of both the union representatives and our negotiation team. The LFD are not just public servants, they're heroes really in our city. We all know that, and it's our, you know, responsibility to make sure that they are taken care of, and I would like to offer an approving, and I'd like to actually put it on the regular, not because I don't think it will pass 7-0, but I don't want it to get buried in the consent. I would like it to be on its own agenda item, if that's okay with my colleagues. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Councilman Morgan.
Yes, I just had a quick question. I think this is very good. If the firefighters signed off on it, I'm fairly confident, and you also. I think this is probably meet somewhere in the middle where things will be good for them in the future. I did have a question. I'm pretty 99% good with this. After reading, it looks good, and I'm familiar with it, but this MERP plan that you mentioned, that you're not quite sure what that acronym stands for, but with that being said, is the city relinquishing all the funds that are in the RHSP and turning it over to this MERP? Is that how that works? And then the firefighters' union kind of directs the funds or handles the funds? I'm just kind of curious how that works. That's really the only question I have on the contract. It's pretty self-explanatory, but accept that.
So, the group that administers MERP, it's a national, it's a national program. It's really widely implemented across the West Coast especially, and it based, so, and we had a lot of questions, because if you take the money out of the city's current Retirement Health Savings Plan, that plan loses out on some interest and the ability to, you know, before we give it to our employees, to continue to have it grow as an investment here. And also, it takes several years for you to become fully vested in the Retirement Health Savings Plan. The folks at MERP did a great job. They said, "Nope, you can hold on to those funds. You can accrue them on your, you know, on your own books, and then when they would become vested, then the city makes a, like, excuse me, not a donation, a payment to the MERP in that full amount." So, that amount's still being accrued by our finance department, and then it's sent over when the employee becomes eligible, fully vested. So, they really did a great job. I would say, if you look at their whole national program, they did a great job of addressing the issues that each municipality would run into from coast to coast.
Okay, so I think that pretty much answers my question. So, we hang on to the money, so none of our other employees in the RHSP would be affected, because we're doing a money dump from our funds into this MERP. So, that's, we're not going to be affected, but once the employee retires, that money comes out and goes into that fund that they have chosen.
Yes.
Okay, seems very straightforward.
Cost neutral for the city, but a great thing for our firefighters.
Very good. I like it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Toye, then Councilman Donovan.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. To Ms. Leibel, thank you very much for all your hard work and your team and our administration as well. You know, you get to a point as you go through budgets and other things, everybody's important in the City Hall and elsewhere that work for the city and do the wonderful things they all do, but you can't do enough for those public safety people. And I say that from personal experience with a father that was an officer for 30-some years in this city. I say it from a brother that was so disabled and had the ambulance at my house over and over again, and saw how those paramedics treated him and worked with our family. And I also had the privilege, when I was in the legislature, to meet some of the New York firemen that did the 9/11 and how special that was. So, when you get down to the nitty-gritty, these men and women deserve whatever we can give them and yet be fiscally responsible in that venue, and I think you've met that mark through what you've done. So, I want to thank you very much and thank the mayor and others. So, appreciate it, and after I leave, I'm hoping other councils feel the same way, that they will treat them very, very well. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Donavich.
Thanks, Mr. President. Thanks, Ms. Leibel, for being here this evening. I know we keep on mentioning the term MERP. It's the Medical Expense Reimbursement Plan. We kept hearing that term thrown out a lot tonight. I just wanted to say thanks and good job to the administration, good job to the union president, Mr. Harity, and his entire leadership team there, and the entire union, and the collective bargaining group. I know there was a lot of back and forth there as contract negotiations usually are, so great job to all the parties involved, and it's nice to see this plan finally coming back before us, so we can hopefully vote on it moving forward. As a lot of council members already expressed here tonight, we're lucky to have the first responders we do in Livonia. We have the nicest parks, we work on roads, we work on sidewalks, we work on trying to fix buildings. We do all these things. We're trying to get done our normal city business, but none of it matters if we don't have a safe community, and a safe community is a strong community. It is interesting, this is my last year on council, and I've got to vote on a few contract negotiations, and I remember back in 2019 when there was a lot of discussion in 2020 about the new contract and the reinstatement, so to speak, of the new plan and how that's led us to this point today. So, it's nice to see a couple variations of contracts kind of come full circle and getting our staffing up. It's not easy. Who wants to be first responders nowadays with what the media does to our police officers and what the media does to just first responders in general, whether they be fire or police? It's a tough career, and like the mayor alluded to earlier, these people run into danger for us as we all run the opposite way. So, it is a balancing act, trying to be a fiscally responsible taxpayer community, making sure we're managing our taxpayer dollars at the same time being competitive and paying our first responders, but it's a job well done by these folks, and good job to the administration getting here to the finish line. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Sheel.
Thank you. I just think it's wonderful that we have a contract with the firefighters now that hopefully will be approved. The fact that it was passed by 80% of the members is wonderful. I did have two questions. They were both asked and answered, so I'm all set. So, thank you very much for all of your hard work in this.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councilwoman Wozinski?
I don't want to, you know, repeat what everyone else has said just to do it, but I will and say, congratulations, Janine, for getting this across the finish line. I know it wasn't an easy task, but I feel reassurance, given the approval rate of the union, that this is a true benefit to our first responders and to the city as a whole. So, great job to both parties.
Thank you. Through the chair, or through Mr. President, if I may, you know, the firefighters' negotiating team worked really hard. They zealously advocated for their members, and although it didn't make my job easier, I respected what they were doing, and, you know, if it's an uphill climb, at least you have an amazing view at the summit. So, it's good to see that we have a great contract, that they're in favor of it, and, you know, going forward, we'll be able to go out there and recruit a lot of good new people.
Awesome. Well, we have an approving on regular. Any other comments or questions from council? I'm going to go to the audience. Is there any audience communication? Seeing none. You have an approving on regular. Again, you know, great work. We'll push it over, hopefully formally with, at the finish line in a couple weeks.
Thanks, everyone.
Thank you. Moving on to item number five is a request to approve salary and fringe benefit adjustments for the classification of fire chief and deputy chief. This comes to us from the Civil Service Department for the period of December 1st, 2024 through November 30th, 2027. Hello again.
Hello again. I'm Janine Leibel on behalf of the Civil Service Department. In keeping with our past practice and how we treat our first responder leadership, we offer the benefits that were given to the bargaining unit to our chief and deputy chief. It's how we've always done it, and I think it's fair that as they lead this department, they get the same benefits. They were at one point a member of the bargaining unit, and then they stepped out of that role in order to provide greater strategic leadership. So, we'd like to enhance their world and also offer these benefits to them.
Awesome. Council?
Thank you. First of all, I don't know if the TV caught it, but Director Leibel ran down that aisle like she just got called up on The Price is Right.
I think they did.
That's how I feel when I'm here.
It's going to be on the B-roll later.
Come on down. Anyway, no, but all seriousness aside, we have tremendous leadership at the helm of our LFD, and of course, we'd be remiss not to pass this as well. So, I'd be happy to offer this, but just like for the firefighters, I'd like to put this on the regular so that we can honor the chief and his, you know, leadership.
Sounds good. Anything else from council? Anything from the audience? Seeing none? We have two approvings on regular. We'll see you back here on the 20th, or, yeah, 31st. Wow, gosh, where's the time going? All right, moving on. Thank you again. Have a great night. We'll move on to item number six. This award of bid comes to us from the Department of Public Works. In reference to the bicentennial park irrigation system installation from budgeted funds, Mr. Moore, how are you?
Good. How are you?
Good, good. Tell us things that are coming in the spring and warmer weather.
No kidding. Doug Moore, DPW, hopefully it doesn't snow. I probably just cursed.
You did. It's fine. I had to say that. You're on the record, so.
Might as well. My birthday's March 20th. We always have snow on March 20th, so.
Oh, man.
The department, yeah, good. Go home, go to bed. The department is seeking approval for the replacement of the irrigation system on Diamonds 1 through 3 at Bicentennial Park along with Soccer Field 8. These are the three ball diamonds that are east of the clubhouse and the soccer field that's directly south. Specification and bids were put on mitten on January 22nd. We had a mandatory pre-bid meeting on the 29th. Sealed bids were opened on February 11th. We had eight companies attend the meeting, and six bids were received. Stafford Irrigation was the low bidder for both, on meeting specs for the program. Currently, the water source for this system is from the Fox Creek Irrigation Pond. The new system will be running out of the Comfort Station that's adjacent to Diamond 1. The reason being, when we get hot, dry weather, the golf course cuts us off so that they can keep their fields and greens and tees green, and we get brown. So, the current system was put in in 1990s, and we're just looking to replace it. We did check Stafford's references, spoke to three people, spoke very highly of them. I also checked with the MGIA Association, and there were no outstanding issues with them. We're looking to have council approve the amount of $65,480. We are also asking to have a contingency fund of $10,000 put in for unforeseen instances that go with the hookup of the new source from the Comfort Station. We had a design done by Site 1 over on Merriman Road, and we do believe we have enough water pressure, but there's a concern that we might have to get a booster pump.
Okay. Council, Councilman Donavich.
Thanks, Mr. President. Thanks, Mr. Moore, for being here. If you have to get that booster, where is that money coming from?
It would come from the budget. We had budgeted $210,000 for this project, and these bids came back amazingly low.
It is interesting, though, to spend that much money. I know people ask about our parks, and we're spending at least $75,000 just a century to keep it green, huh?
Yes.
How many sprinkler systems would you say, off the top of your head, do you think we have watering all of our parks?
We replaced the Ford 1 and 2 in 2017. Beyond these three, the two green meat soccer fields that are just north of the post office, and I believe that's it. So, we don't have very many. The parks that are out in the subdivisions do not have irrigation on those ball diamonds.
We still spent a considerable amount of money just on sprinklers, trying to keep these parks green, huh?
Yes.
Wow. And the water, would, does the city of Livonia pay for that out of a water fund?
Yes.
Okay. Interesting. Yeah, a lot of money. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Vice President.
Thank you. Kind of, just to piggyback a little bit on what Mr. Donavich was asking, I know, I understand now why we're changing the water source. I was going to ask about that, but is this going to cause or incur any additional expenses by changing that water source, or no? It would be net neutral?
Yeah, other than, it would go into the rates, but, and I don't, honestly...
Whether we pull it from the Comfort Station or the...
Correct, yes, yes. Shouldn't change. It'll be running at night. We normally water off-hours, and so the pressure issues, if there were any, which there won't be, will be offset by running it from 11:00 p.m. to 5:00 a.m.
That was my other question. Is it going to affect the Comfort Station? Yeah. We don't need residents upset about that, so. One other little thing, it's probably a clerical error. The proposal form says Ford Field on it. I just want to make sure that the, they don't go to Ford Field and...
We have tendency to copy the old things, and Ford Field was the last time we replaced irrigation systems.
So, yeah, I just want to make sure they go the right place.
It's Bicentennial.
Yeah. Thank you.
We do have a motion, correct? Or no? We do not have a motion. Councilman Morgan.
Yeah, well, we can put this on the, on the consent agenda.
We have an approving on consent. Any further comments from council? Anything from the audience? All right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Moore. Go Patriots. I see that. I see it. There we go.
Go Chargers.
Number seven is a request to waive the formal bidding process, extend the contract with Engineered Comfort Systems Incorporated, and authorize an appropriation expenditure. This comes to us from the Engineering Division to include the Livonia Police Department HVAC chiller installation. This is going to be, Mr. Lear?
Yes.
The floor is yours.
Thank you. Back in November, the council approved the purchase of the replacement chiller for the police department. Now, after taking, getting drawings done, getting specs, we need to have someone install this. So, we have a similar project going on right now at the library. We are very pleased with the contractor that's doing the work there. They're extremely clean, working with the library on the hours. They gave us a price for doing this work as well, and we're asking to waive the formal bidding process since it was less than a year since we did the formal bids on the library. They still came out low. Basically, they've been doing a great job, and they're on time and under, on budget, and I could say under, but they are on budget. And due to the time savings of having to go off for bids, do contracts, things, the new chiller is scheduled to show up at this moment in mid-May. Last time, they surprised us a month early even. So, we are asking for the council to approve an extension of the contract with Engineering Comfort Systems in the amount of $156,243.50, as well as waiving the building inspection fees for permitting. They'll still get permits, just be no cost, because we really don't want to pay them an extra 15% just to get reimbursed by us.
No, absolutely. Before I go to council, Mr. Lear, do we normally waive those for contractors for city projects? I always thought, I mean, that seems like something that would make sense for us.
Yeah, so typically, we ask, but I'm trying to do it proactively now with the council instead of having to come back later and beg Mr. Hannah in the Building Department to not, you know, try and run up some fees on us.
Well, I can understand if it's like a special inspection or something, but if it's an in-house, I always, you know, I like that.
So, when I talked to him, he did suggest that, yeah, if we would put it in and try and get it approved ahead of time, it would make his job easier, since it is in the, you know, ordinances.
Thank you, Mr. Hannah. Collaborative, cross-departmental love. There it is.
Trying to keep the costs as low as we can.
I hear you. Council?
I can take it.
Yeah, Vice President.
Thank you. I mean, honestly, and I know we pressed Mr. Lear on this back in the fall, knowing we will probably have a new LFD or LPD building in the next few years, kind of pains us to have to spend money on this, but the building's become unbearable for the employees right now, and we can't hold off. So, we really don't have a choice here. We've got the chiller already coming. We have to install it. So, I'd be happy to offer an approving on consent.
We have an approving on consent. Councilman Donavich.
Thanks, Mr. President. Mr. Lear, good job to you and your team. I know you have been working hard on this and have become an expert in all things HVAC and chiller units. I know there's some discussion about waiving the bid process with these, this company. I know they've been doing a good job already on our library, and I think what you're saying is we're still getting a very good competitive price while keeping this team working and continuing the kind of pattern of good work they've been doing.
Correct, yeah. They, based on the work effort that they would need to do with the police, it lined up with the bid prices that they had done back in the, in the last fall for the library as well. So, they walked through with us, helped us more or less cut down to just what we need to get for this project, so that we're keeping it as low as possible and still have the plans and specs ready if something changes, and we need to go for the heating, heating portion of it later in the year.
Well, hopefully, we can maybe reuse this unit if there is ever a new police department. Thanks, Mr. President.
Thank you. Anything else from council? Anything from the audience? Seeing none? We are now going to move on to item... We are now going to move on to item number eight is a request to waive the formal bidding process and approve the 2025 sidewalk repair program by extending contract 24-G unit prices with Joe Rotundo Construction Corporation, and requested to authorize an appropriation expenditure to Precision Concrete Cutting Incorporated. This comes to us from the Engineering Department. Mr. Lear, is this you again?
Thank you. So this is one of our yearly large projects that we do. Typically, we go out for bids and then try and extend it the next year so that we're not going out for bid every year. We do like to do it every other or so, so that we kind of keep people up to current prices. Rotundo Construction has offered to extend their pricing from the last bid with minor adjustments to a couple of the certain items, concrete prices matching, you know, the standard increases that they're seeing from suppliers. So we are asking the council to approve a contract extension for Rotundo in the amount of $1,189,782.25.
Mr. Chair. Councilman Toye.
I'd like to offer an approving. Joe Rotundo's Construction has done a lot of these through the years, and has always done a good job as far as I know, never heard any complaints, et cetera, quality work, so offered approving. On whatever the council chooses, I guess consent would be fine.
Is consent fine?
Yeah, it's just-
All right. We'll leave it on consent. Anything else from council? Anything from the audience? Mr. Martin, two minutes.
Thank you, Christopher Martin, and talk about the sidewalks. First off, anyone who puts their name on the sidewalk, okay, I look at that as a, it's a little bit of having pride in your work. It's something that maybe is old school, but it's kind of a nice thought. And so the work done that Joe had done out here around this sidewalk, around City Hall, it's got his name stamped, and it looks fantastic. And it's old school, he's put expansion joints in, and he actually trowels the control joints in while he's doing it, he doesn't come the next day or the day after and saw cut them in. Much different from, if some of you have ever gone to, I mentioned it a while ago, a while back, the cement work done at the Sandberg Library on the Seven Mile, how sloppy that is, and that was done by some of our own employees. It looks hideous, okay, not one expansion joint in the entire thing. As far as the library over here, the orange cone has been there for well over a year, marking where there's a trip hazard, okay? And I mentioned that February of last year, at one of Kerry's meetings, that that needs to be ground down, and it's still there. So I know people are working on it, okay? But I really think that Joe does a good job as someone who did some cement work when they were a little bit younger, that's me. That really looks, looks nice, brushed nice, you know, so it's really something that is, whoever does it there takes pride in their work, and also puts their name on it.
That's time, Mr. Martin, but we appreciate it. I thought you were going to go somewhere else with the stamp.
I'm saving it.
No, 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 you're good, but I do definitely agree that we have a good contractor in the Rotundos. Anything, we already went to the council, anything else from the audience?
Seeing none.
Moving on to item number nine is a word of contract, comes to us from the Engineering Division for Phase 4 of the DPW camera, security camera installation from budgeted funds. Mr. Lear?
Correct. Okay, so this item, over the past couple of years, we have been working to get security and monitoring into our DPW yard to stem the theft and vandalism of some of the equipment out there. The first three phases, we've covered pretty much the perimeter fencing and the entrance gates. We're looking for one final, hopefully final, phase of this to install an additional five cameras and do some wiring upgrades to cover some of the dead spots within the complex Kind of more or less monitoring when accidents do happen within the yard, you know, if that, those things tend to pop up every now and then, or if there's questions. We are looking to waive the competitive bidding due to the fact that Advanced Security is doing all the cameras and security for all the, not only the DPW, but the City Hall, the police and fire, and they would be able to bring their system in and have it work with the existing without any issues. With that, we are looking for council to approve a contract with ASC for $28,944.53.
Thank you. Council?
I have a question.
Yeah, floor is yours.
So the quote shows that it expires on 3/29, and our next voting meeting isn't until the 31st. Will they extend it?
Yes, yeah, he's, they're willing to keep going. Actually, if we get approval, he's ready to start right away as anyway, so he's, yeah, there is no cost increase for going past that deadline.
Okay, great, then I'm willing to offer an approving on consent, please.
We have an approving on consent. Any issues from that with council? Anything from the audience? All right, Mr. Lear, you did well.
All right, thank you.
We'll have to tell Todd that it was a lot worse than it was. We'll move on to item number 10 is a proposed amendment to Livonia Court of Ordinances, as amended, comes to us from the Department of Law, to amend section 007 and 010 of Title 5, Chapter 3, in order to simplify the language. I couldn't agree more. Tell me about it.
Good evening, Eric Goldstein from the Livonia Law Department. We encountered an issue with some of the current language when we were in supporting code enforcement efforts by prosecuting, and the defendant owners of this home they did not live in had a very smart attorney who found a crack in our language and was going to drive a truck through it. We managed to resolve that matter. Essentially, I said, well, that's fine, I don't agree with your analysis, but maybe some appellate judge will down the road, but it doesn't really matter, because between now and next year, I'm going to approach city council to change the language, and then if I succeed with them, we'll be right back here, we'll be right out. We worked it out with them, they did something to fix the situation on their end, and we were able to walk away. It wasn't, it was, it was a win-win walk away.
It seems like you're pumped up. Listen, honestly, you're one of the most honorable people I know, so listen, seeing you pumped up, it sounds like you kind of, you kind of won. I'm going to hand it over to Councilman Donovan.
Mr. President, I concur with your statement. It is always a pleasure to have Mr. Goldstein here before city council. I don't know if I like you more than Mr. Carter, but you're a close second.
Oh.
And I like his tie too, it's a very constitutional tie. I'll offer an approving on consent, this is a legal matter, I know Mr. Hannah's here from ordinance this evening as well, and cleaning up contract language, ordinance language, I think it's a good thing. I'd like to offer an approving on consent, there's no objection from my colleagues.
Thank you. Any issues, council? Anything from the audience? Seeing none? That concludes our study meeting. I'm going to go back to the audience, if there's anybody that would like to speak on items not on the agenda? Seeing none? I'm going to, there we go. I think I can safely show seven. Good, good night, Livonia. Look at, I'm going to save, I got a, I got a whole half a Red Bull can.